So, good evening. Welcome to School Committee for February 10th, 2014. It's 7:36, I think. And we're not live this evening, but taped. So feel free to tune in at a future date on Channel 31 on Verizon. I don't know what it is on Comcast. We'll start off our agenda, what is it? Nine on Comcast? Okay. We'll start off our agenda with approval of minutes. We have a number of minutes from a combination of regular school committee meetings and advisory, excuse me, budget sessions that we've had, as well including the joint meeting.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th, 2014. Go ahead.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the minutes, item 2.2, January 25th, just one typo. In the block section of the School Committee Advisory Board members, third block from the bottom of that section, pretty much there, there is, pretty much, were all the requests funded? I'm going to see, sorry.
Is this a sustainability, how far are we?
How far we are going to get back, pretty much?
I think if we just reverse the hour and the week, it will make sense.
All, should be pretty much all of the...
All of the requests were funded.
Yeah, there's a couple of extra words in there. We'll just correct that. Not a substantive item.
So I'll make a motion with that correction.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got January 27th?
January 27th, under unfinished business, first line, very end of that line, discussion that took place, just that one, not substantive. Sure, the first line under 7.1, that very first line, very end, the discussion that took place.
Okay.
Got it?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we have January...
Make a motion to approve the January 27th executive session minutes.
Or a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, January 3rd minutes, make a motion to approve.
Second.
January 30th, first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. So we'll just clear up those couple of corrections with Dennis and get those into the record. Terrific. Okay. Next we have Student Communications. James, welcome.
So the Teens, the Jeans for Teens drive is wrapping up at the end of this week. The box is now at Atlantic Bagel. I do want to correct myself. I said the grant was for $1,000 that we could win. It's actually $10,000 we could win.
Wow.
So gently used jeans, you can drop them off at Atlantic Bagel. Last week, so the January 31st to the 1st, a group of six, including myself, from Student Council went to the CMAS lock-in. And so we had a guest speaker, couple workshops, and fun there. LMC News, HHS raised over $300 for Reed Global over the December break, and they're continuing that for February break, so they're hoping to raise more money with that. Sports news, swim team, congratulations, boys, third place finish in the MIA Central Self-Sectional Tournament. They'll move on to the All States next weekend. Girls placed 18th, and Lily McCarthy placed 7th in 200 Free and 5th in the 500 Freestyle Events. Dance team placed 3rd in a field of 13 high schools and college teams at their competition over the past weekend. And their final school performance is Tuesday, tomorrow, at the basketball game. Wrestling, congratulations, team over the winning, defeating Carver, Wareham, Norwell, and Stichew over the weekend. And that's all I have for today.
Great, thank you, James. Any questions before James goes, does, finishes his homework? Thanks a lot. Okay. Regular communications. I know there's two things that were in the packet.
Yes, there were two letters of advocacy there, one from CPAC for the ambulance, not the ambulance, the wheelchair band and the other for music parents. We got a music package.
Great. Karen, did you, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
No.
Okay.
I didn't mean to come to address this separate meeting, because I thought that was more, and we take three new channels to accommodate regarding that. So I feel at this point that we don't have any other business to address.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the letter that came. Okay. Are we confirmed for that March 10th with Garrett?
We have let him know that we put him on the agenda, and I also spoke to Jamie, and we didn't have the ability to let him know, and Garrett has said he would speak about that, and typically they like office.
Okay. Great. Okay. Questions and comments in the audience? Anything not on the agenda? No? Okay. Superintendent's report.
A couple of things. I left it replaced tonight, the February 1 enrollment update in Sundry, and the way I would say, doesn't change much during the year, however, we inherited four additional preschool students over the break, this is breaking into January, and as well, the total in-house enrollment went up by five students.
Yeah, I've heard, just from my own kids, of at least two new students moving in the last couple of weeks.
Yes, that's right. And this February 1, the fourth would be...
Yes.
So, secondly, I also left it replaced tonight, something that came just this afternoon, and it's the official press release from DESE about the Park Field Test that's going to be occurring later on this spring. Eighty-one thousand students in all. Eight percent of the state's total public school population will be participating in Hingham, the preschools, either high school, the middle school, and e-school, selected classes from those buildings, actually next Monday, is it, Ellen?
After vacation.
After vacation, the Monday after vacation. There is a full day training session, and we have to pull administrators and tech people out of buildings for an entire day for training for this event. We're doing paper and pencil tests, except for the high school, where they will be piloting an electronic test.
So for that day of training, we have to get substitutes?
Well, these are administrators and tech folks, so, not substitutes, but certainly taking them away from other things that need to happen, especially on the day after vacation.
Yeah.
Related to that, I put it in your packet, a sample from the Park website of a test question. This one happens to be a math one. Our administrative team has done a math test now and a Thursday literacy, I'm not sure which was the harder, to give you a sense, and I'll keep forwarding these of the different kinds of things that they are now testing. So that's in there. As well, I left it replaced, a revised, I think this is the fourth revised calendar of school committee meetings, and it particularly reflects the change in date in April, where we will be meeting on the 16th and the 28th rather than on the 7th and 28th. That's a change that you made recently, and I think, and is that...
Great. Thank you. Okay, so, nothing under unfinished business, correct?
That's correct.
That's nice.
Except that it suggests all of our business is unfinished, and we haven't concluded any of it.
Right. Under eight, new business, what we're going to do is, we're going to take one thing out of order and go to 8.3 to hear an update on the high school fields project before we move on to the budget hearing, because we've been joined by Tom Perry, who's our project manager from Park Corporation, and I asked Tom to come. You have at your places just a little update on where we stand with remaining work with respect to the two aspects of the project, the fields portion and the concession building. And I wanted Tom to come just to give us a quick overview of where we are, what remains outstanding, and if you have any questions, you can ask. Tom.
Do you have some forms that follow along?
Sure. The two projects, the Fields Project, which focused on the multipurpose field, grandstands, baseball, softball field, and the concession building. The building which is being finished off, the new restroom facility, both products are pretty much at their physical end, with the Fields Project just waiting for the weather to be more favorable and the snow to recede, and they'll address a few minor items, landscaping maintenance, which they own, some fertilization, some cleanup, also some drainage issues, which became apparent late in the fall, just kind of a combination of grass not germinating yet, and just, you know, stabilizing the area, and just ponds developed with, you know, erosion control still in place. So they'll address that, also some grading, minor grading will be done, those areas became apparent, areas that weren't draining to drains, those will be addressed, you know. Other than that, a lot of the work remaining is administrative, you know, closeout documentation, ASBILs closing out permits. That work is in process. The ASBIL survey and record documents for the Fields Project are in the designer's hands, they're reviewing those for completeness, making sure they, all the maintenance and operations manuals, the school needs, all the training's been done, all the warranties are signed over and titled to Hingham Public Schools. So a lot of that administrative work is, you know, active, while there's no machines going on out there, there's a lot of work still going on, and we hope to have that all wrapped up and closed by mid-March, and hopefully early April, end of April, the physical work will also be complete for the field. The concession building, they just finished on Friday. Their last big task, which was to install the stainless steel countertops, which were custom, custom fit products that they had to wait for manufacturing on, fit those in on Friday. The designer will go back, check, make sure that that all meets their contract requirements, and then some cleanup, some minor punchless items remain, and that physical work at the concession stand should be closed up. And again, same administrative task, closing up permits, certificates of occupancy, warranties, guarantees, all that'll be gone through, and hopefully, similarly, that, we hope to have all that wrapped up by mid-March, end of March. The one, the one item that is remaining and is kind of weather contingent, so the concession building is on final floor finish, which the products, epoxy products, need certain temperature, they have temperature limitations for their installation, so once the weather warms, rather than paying for temporary heat, hopefully it'll play into our schedule for the use of the building, and we can get that installed late in March.
So just, just to elaborate on that a little bit more.
Elaborate.
The, we had, we had specific conversations during design about the floor and what the Board of Health was going to be requiring, and we had that in the context of looking at a number of things in consultation with the Board of Health. The floor finish, the ceiling, the wall finish, whether or not we needed screens on the roll-top openings, the sink, things of that nature. And we specifically discussed the fact that the floor needed to be a smooth finish, smooth clean finish, you know, if we're going to be handling any kind of food in there, whether it was just packaged goods, or if there was any intention at any time in the future to do anything more than that. And that discussion was, Ed was in the room, Andy was in the room, I was in the room, Gail was represented, I think Tom was there, John was there. In any event, what ended up in the bid documents, in the specifications, was unclear as to the finish for the flooring. When the question was asked of the designer, who was someone that Gail had subcontracted with, if you will, the response came back with kind of an outdated specification of a wood trowel finish, which is not what you would typically see used today on a floor like that. So the floor, and that was not communicated to us following the meeting that we had, where it was made clear what the Board of Health was going to require and what we expected. Once the floor was put in, it became clear that it was not, not of a quality that was acceptable. So we've had some discussions with Seaver, the contractor, and Gail. Seaver has made some efforts to grind it down, to improve kind of unevenness, lack of smoothness. It's still not sufficient. It doesn't look like a finished floor, and I don't think that the Board of Health would find it acceptable, based on the discussions that we had. So we're working to get to where we need to be on that, and we're putting together a proposal, we're waiting for something from Gail that'll recommend a proposal and how to get to where we need to be. And we expected that actually last week, we haven't seen it yet.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully in the very near term we'll get that, we'll know what the cost is going to be, we can discuss how that cost gets covered later on. Some of us are of the opinion that the designer may need to bear some of that cost, since the era was theirs, but we'll have discussions about that going forward. So that's a major thing, obviously, a hurdle to get this finished, to get Board of Health to sign off, so we can get a distributive occupancy and have that operational come spring.
Does that floor that you just spoke of, does that extend into the restrooms as well?
Yes.
With the same concern, and so on?
Yes. I, I think, I don't know that the Board of Health would be as concerned with the quality of the finish of the floor in the bathrooms as they would in the concession room, but to my mind, it all looks terrible. So. Karen?
Question on, back to the Fields Project, the landscaping sort of issues, you know, you have spring 2014, April and April, sort of walk me through, when do you actually start in the spring? I mean, so dependent, isn't it, on when the winter ends?
Yeah.
Which sometimes can last into the spring?
Well, it's, it's nice to think the end of April will bring, you know, birds and blooming flowers, it's not all that, not all accurate. Usually, you know, second week in May is when we, you know, see the grass growing, you know, maybe start your first cuttings, maybe, you know, that third, fourth week in May. So as far as...
How many weeks' worth of work is here?
How many weeks' worth of work here? I don't, I don't think there's more than, you know, three or four days total of work here. You know, I think, I think a lot of this work is subcontracted work, it's not necessarily Rad's crew, it's their landscaper, you know, so it might, might be done over a week or two, but, depending on schedules, but I think all in all, you know, the grass will be planted, will it be growing and ready to be mowed? No, not by the end of April or the end of May, really, but by the end of June should look like, you know, your backyard or something freshly constructed, but, you know, usable.
Ed?
Tom, the remaining work, one, two, three, fourth bullet point, remove, remove erosion controls and catch basin protection. We all know the reason for that. But the next point, remove mulch from the islands, which was, which was part of the, which was the culprit, and replace with lawn. Not to, not to change tunes here, but would you, did anybody consider ground cover, some myrtle, some lily in the valley, pachysandra?
Yeah.
Poisonous sumac, you know, in your, in your poison?
Yeah, and this was sort of a Ray and Tom thing, there wasn't really any, it was originally lawn, and then there was some discussion about the maintenance of that lawn, it's a small, narrow island, and then it was, became mulch.
And we can certainly talk about a pachysandra or something like that as well. I think, you know, what happened was, you know, maintenance staff took a look at the plan for lawn in there and said, this is going to be a pain to, and we get that, but mulch was the wrong alternative. And that really didn't go through the right channels before that decision was made and implemented, unfortunately. So once we realized that mulch was becoming a problem, it was going to be a problem, you know, we talked about, what can we do to change that up come spring? And we can certainly look at, you know, something else, because I don't disagree with you.
But if you're going to do grassy, do some builder's ride.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, just the, the big concern is mulch not getting into the drainage system, which is an underground infiltration system, so preventing mulch from getting underground into the drainage system is the goal, you know, and that's why the erosion control silts actually still in place, preventing water from also moving fast underground, but, you know, so yeah, that's, that's the goal there, something stable that's not going to wash away or erode.
Or ground cover.
Yeah, or ground cover, or just, just a stone burn to not allow things to encroach into the drain.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Any other questions?
Good. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate you coming.
Yep, thank you.
Tom, thank you.
You'll keep us posted about hearing from our friends.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night. Do you want to finish?
Yeah.
While we're on it.
Yeah, the, the budget is, a version of the budget for the Fields Project is in front of you. It's, and this is in conjunction really with the capital outlay process, you know, last week when we met with the capital outlay, they, there's no support really for $50,000 for the granite curbing, so the project has to bear that $50,000 for the granite curbing. So I've adjusted the, the project to include some additional funding from the field revolving account. Over the past couple of years, we've preserved that balance in that account, so that the School Committee could in fact do some enhancements to the field if they felt that it was appropriate. So some of the projects, of the, of the changes that we've taken, I've identified a number of upgrades that the committee actually took for the Fields Project, such as the scoreboards. We had to place netting around the, as I say, the scoreboards for the baseball fields, they weren't originally contracted for. The, the netting that we placed around the multipurpose field, you know, that was $24,000. We also went forward to pizza neighbors, we've done some additional plantings at a cost of $12,000. We put a spotlight onto the, the flag from the scoreboard. We've added a couple of handicapped spots down by Union Street, just to make it more user-friendly for the people that would be crossing Union Street. We painted the center of the field with a big H logo, and then with the concession, we initially contracted for a basic, for micro or, you know, laminate type surface, but we did upgrade that to stainless steel. So the total of those actually are $64,000. And I think they're rightly, you know, just upgrades to the overall facility, and I think it's appropriate that they, we would charge field revolving for those. With, with those changes, the balance that we have in the contingency now is at $78,000, which, and I've shown a reserve here, $50,000 for that curbing that we'll hold. So with those changes now, the, the project, the contingency versus the gap now, the project is $18,000 positive, so we have the project completely funded. From a collection standpoint, we're still, your sheet shows outstanding to collect of $13,000. In the next version, I actually have to reduce some of the committed funds, I have to reduce the committed funds by about $9,500 that we no longer expect to collect. So that outstanding collect really will be brought down to about $3,800.
So in the contingency, you're, you're carrying seventy, almost $79,000.
Yeah, $79,000.
$79,300.
That's correct.
And that includes, that, that's net of the $50,000?
No, the $50,000 will be offset against that.
Offset against?
Yes. Yep. The reserve is in there, I mean, it's, it's in there for reserve, so we see, you know, we, we still have that money that we will transfer out once we know, you know, when the granite curbing is actually taking effect. Initially, we had the granite curbing in the budget, but since it was happening so far out in the future, we removed it temporarily, and, and, you know, it's become clear that capital outlay doesn't support that as an extra effort, but thought of it as part of the project, so it's been, you know, re-included right now into the budget. And a good use of the funds. I mean, the past couple of years, you know, we've, at the, we've always talked about preserving that account so that the committee could do some upgrades, you know, enhancements to the overall Fields Project during the process.
Well, and many of them are things that are, that are safety related, like the netting?
Yeah, netting is safety related.
If you're going to play lacrosse on that, on that field, you can't do it without netting.
Absolutely, right.
And, you know, you can't play on a baseball dummy without a scoreboard, I mean, things like this that were not included in the original, or were value engineered out, or
Right.
Just were not able to do under the project.
Exactly, yeah.
Because, you know, we got about a million dollars less than we needed to get from down here.
Right. And they hadn't been contracted for, and then, you know, we had a resident say, can you light up the flag? And so, you know, great, great thought, yes, we absolutely, so we put the, you know, got a light to light up the flag, and then with the extra plantings, you know, the, the buffer, I mean, clearly they would grow, but the fact that we added a few more so they grow a little bit quicker for, you know, to, to help the neighbors out in their respect. So, I mean, I think there's some, you know, true, you know, worldly projects that the money's directed towards.
Good. Any questions on this? Okay, so we'll go back up to 8.1, which was our official public hearing on the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2015.
Well, as I look around the room, I think just about everybody here has seen every one of these slides at least once and perhaps more.
Oh, my goodness.
So I certainly apologize for that. I think perhaps you all deserve a coffee break, because we do have to go on with business that is mandated, and that is to have a public hearing. So I'll tell you in advance that there are not a lot of new slides. I've adjusted some of them in a small way, but we do owe to our audience at home, whenever it is that they will be watching this, that we go through this. So we'll go through it rather quickly. You should have a handout that has nothing on it that you haven't seen before, I don't think. So, moving forward, we talked a lot last week about who we are, trying to identify ourselves as perhaps a bit different from some of the other town departments, and I won't read through all of these, but we're different in terms of the population, we serve every day, 4,300 kids ages 3 to 22. It's not all three years, three-year-olds, obviously, and it's not all young people between 18 and 22, but that is the age range that we're required to serve for certain students. We've got a special population within that, 600 students on IEP, and that means they have special needs, and nearly 200 students with 504 plans, and that's federal civil rights. We're the largest employer, we have 600 employees, we have six different collective bargains. We have six different collective bargaining units with whom we must negotiate, and we happen to be negotiating with all of them this spring. In fact, we've already begun with three of those units. We do provide recreational co-curricular activities for just about everybody at secondary level, and as well, we provide physical, social, emotional, mental health resources for many of the families that we have, and the number of families we have is about 2000, 2,800 in our district. We're caretakers and facilities managers for 10 buildings, six of them are schools, and the other four are at the depot. We have lots of open space and playing fields, and we have lots of things within our buildings like roofs and boilers and elevators, lots of very expensive things, lots of smaller things, but they all seem to need attention, sometimes simultaneously. We have our own transportation division, we have 20 lease buses with a spare, and we have nine special ed vans that we own. We have some maintenance vehicles, a small number. We don't have any personal cars, we don't have anyone who is assigned a, a car, or a truck, or anything of that sort. And we have about 2,000 kids that we transport back and forth each day to school, and then obviously, we have field trips and other kinds of activities, athletic trips and so on. We serve about 1,000 meals a day. We would like to serve more in terms of percentage of our student body, and Kim, and, and John, and all of us really are working hard on trying to increase that number. It's a discriminating customer base, and so we work hard to do that every day. So, we're a very complex entity, and so, you know, are we a department of the town? Are we a division of the town? Some things to think about, about where we fit with respect to the other departments or divisions, but certainly, we are not the typical department of the town. So, we created this year, again, second year in a row, needs-based budget. We've gone over that before as to what that is. I think the key things in the last bullet there, we broadly define needs, and they encompass things in four different areas. Area of enrollment increase, needs around the changing demographic profile we have, that's student demographic, and also parent demographic. The backlog of program and service and facilities deficiencies, which we particularly tried to focus on this year, and then various other things that create needs, the federal and state mandates, school committee priorities, committee expectations, and so on. So, you have this in paper version, we have a hard time getting it so it shows up, because it's so dense on a screen. But this is the budget, it's the same one that you've seen before, you do have it in paper. It's a 9.52% increase, and these are all of the different categories. I'm sorry, 8.52 for this part of it, the total is 9.52. Thank you, Carol.
4.92.
4.92, 8.52 in the regular ed. Thank you. And then, the other two categories, the special education budget, that's actually a decrease of 5.35%, and that's logic, the results of two things. A bigger, in fact, the biggest circuit breaker reimbursement amount we ever have received, a little over a million dollars, and also a smaller number of students currently out of district, and also projected for next year to be out of district as well. And then, the vocational is down because the number of students we anticipated going, going to vocational is also down. So, the total proposed budget is 4.92%, and you have that. It's a net budget. We started doing this, we always had some offset in, in the budget, but not all of them would show up in the budget, and we realized a number of years ago that we really should be very transparent about the monies that we're asking for, and they are net of offsets. And there are really two kinds of offsets. One are grants that we get, and Hingham gets mainly what are called entitlement grants. They're grants that everybody gets based upon mainly on the size of the population and the, the kind of demographic that we represent. We don't get very many grants that we would apply for. Most of those grants that are not entitlement grants are based upon socioeconomic status, so we don't get very many of those. So, these are all entitlement. And then, the other offsets that we have come from our revolving accounts, and they're from monies that we take in, either from tuitions that children in the full-day kindergarten pay, or that students in the integrated preschool pay. There are things like our students' athletic fee, and then they're in other revolving accounts where we collect fees or stipends for use of our facilities, both our fields and our, in our buildings. We have a small cable grant. We host a small class from the South Shore Ed Collaborative, that's in the special ed funding up above as an offset. And so, the total amount there is, with respect to special education, you can see the offset there, 2,236,496, that's near the top of the page, and then the total offsets for the regular education, a smaller amount, 363,553. The largest of the offsets in special ed are the circuit breaker, which is, as I said, a little over a million, that's the 1,16184 for the coming year. And of course, that offsets some extraordinary costs that we had to pay for students that we budgeted for two years ago. And then, the 838322 IDEA, that is our only funding that comes from the federal government for special education. And so, the total offsets, 2,600,049, so that the budget is really a net budget. Enrollment continues to grow, although you can see that if the black line were extended the coming year, it's a little bit below the trend line, but it's been about 60 students a year for the last 11 years, and it continues to grow, although not, at not as great an amount as it did back in '09, '10, and those years. This is the monthly chart. I just reported to you that we have four more preschool students than we did when we put this together, and also that we have five more students in our in-house population, not including the preschool. And so, our total is here, and this was, the December one was 2062, in the elementary, and the high school, 1131, and the middle school, 976. So, there are 4,294 kids for whom we have either programmatic or financial responsibility, or both, because the total includes the preschool, and the out-of-district students, and the vocational students. And the red things there are those transition points, which are important to look at, because they suggest what's going to happen as youngsters move from grade five to grade six, and then from grade eight to grade nine. So, they're marked. Our larger class sizes are also marked there in blue, and if I had updated this chart, the south kindergarten is now at two or three classes of 23, which is very high for, for kindergarten. The green figures there are the places that we're particularly watching to see whether or not trends become patterns, or whether they're simply anomalies. So, if we look at that, here are grade one enrollments, and the grade one enrollment is the total bar, the length of the bar. It's made up of two things. The kindergarten enrollment, which is the pink bar from the prior year, with the number of children that we pick up between K and one each year. And I would say, I don't have a bar here for what we anticipate for next year, but for next year, if we assume as many kindergarten as we have this year, which is 295 as of today, and we assume even 40 youngsters moving in from K to one, then the total bar for next year's grade one is going to be taller than the previous one, two, three, four bars. So, that, that is something to watch. And kindergarten enrollments were hit a peak in 2008, '09, and that was the year that, that very large class entered, wasn't 388 at the time, but it was 343. And those, the youngsters now numbering 388 that are moving from grade five to grade six next year. So, things were going down until all of a sudden last September, 295 kids arrived on our doorstep, and that was an increase of 40 that we didn't really expect. We had thought the kindergarten enrollment would continue to go down. So, now we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Will that 295, will that line continue to go up, or will it simply turn around and go back down again? So, those are the two key points to watch. This is one way of looking at the proposed need items that we have added. Here, they are organized, and I believe you have this all in one chart in your handout. Here, they're organized by the function of the budget into which they would fall, which is one way of looking at them. The column you should be looking at is the column in the middle. The column at the right reflected all of the needs that we were presented with, and two of those we did not include in this budget, not because they weren't worthwhile, but they didn't raise, rise to the same level of urgency that we thought that these did. And so, if you take those two items out, then you can see the bar on, the column on the right, and the, that increase then is 8, 9, 4, 2, 20. So, that's one way to look at the things that we've added. Another way to look at them is to look on your handout where you see a little more explanation about each of the things. And I do have all of those slides, if anyone wanted to discuss those. I've taken a lot of them out of this presentation, because you've seen them all before. Another way to look at the proposed new items is to look just at those that involve personnel, in particular, the new full-time equivalents. So, there, you see the ones that are new employees, that means new bodies that would be added to our staffing. On the right are those that are simply additions to a current staff member's role or position. And so, you can see all of those things there summarized by FDEs, and just the comment that, you know, we, of course, people worry, reasonably so, about new employees, meaning added benefits that the town must pay, and the comment there is just that only about half of our teachers over the last several years are, are employees, not just teachers, actually do participate in the town's health insurance, and it's been arranged from 49% to 56%, and it isn't at 49%. At one point, it was about 70% of our teachers who did participate, or employees who participated. And that's no longer the case. We have some pie charts that indicate how the budget is broken up in a more visual way. So, if you look at personnel as one category, that it is the biggest category, and it's 82% of the budget for the year projected. And then, the other big chunk is contracts, and the contracts are things like tuitions for vocational school and for special education, and other kinds of contracted services and maintenance kinds of contracts that we have. So, that whole category together is about 15% of the budget, and then all the other things, that's the textbooks and the supplies, and what else is in all other.
Yeah, the textbooks, supplies, library books, you know, stuff, yeah.
Right, the things of teaching and instruction, and it's that little piece, 3% of the total budget is in that category.
Custodial supplies, stuff, you know, except, anything like a supply, custodial supplies as well.
Right, any kind of supply, not just the teaching supplies.
Right.
That's a good point. So, another way to look at the budget, and that is by looking at the program area here. So, you can see that about half of the budget, 52%, is for regular instruction, and then you can see the next biggest piece is for special education. The regular education is, is significant. The special education is significant, but it is, as a percentage of the total budget, going down, has gone down the last two years, as a matter of fact, after continually increasing to the point where two years ago, it was 26% of the overall budget, and so that's a good thing to see that down. A lot of that is because of, of the current year. And then, we have custodial maintenance and utilities, all of the, the business end of things there, and other categories. The smallest category is vocational education. You can see is a pale green category, school committee and central office. So, that includes, these things include several of the functions. So, for example, the school committee has the 1,100 section of the budget, central office is the 1,200 section. So, as you look at the budget itself with the function numbers to their side, you can see all of them. There are about 33 of those functions, and they're all blocked here in this one pie chart. Special ed enrollment right now, 602 students, 548 of them being in-house, and you can see from the right-hand side here what schools they attend, and 54 currently, and 54 is the same number we're projecting for next year, are students whose education occurs outside the Hingham Public Schools, outside the walls of the Hingham Public Schools. Out-of-district tuition is just a sense of how many youngsters are in the different kinds of placements, private schools, residential. You know, we hear a lot of talk about the residential schools, because they tend to be so costly, but they're really only 11 youngsters out of the 4,300 students that we have responsibility for. Only 11 are in residential schools. That's wonderful things. Great for them and their families, and good for us as well. And then, kind of a typical range for costs, and the cost for educating a child in a, a school outside the district can range from the low 30s all the way up to our most expensive tuition, which is $220,000 for one year for one child. Student services staffing, Liz Flynn is the special ed director, but she also is the director of the student services department, and that covers things other than special education. In particular, it covers things like English language learner. And you might think that's not such a big deal, since we have only one officially identified student, but we're subject to all the same regulations and mandates and need for training and so on as if we had, you know, 50 of these, of these youngsters. We still do have some contracted services. We are recommending in this budget that two services that we now provide to needs that we have that have been funded under a contract with an individual, be brought in to become full-time employee positions. The, the funding for those is still going to be supported to the same degree that it has been by IDEA, but we feel that we need full-time positions, people that are here every day, and that are really part of our staff for meetings and training and all of those kinds of things. So, they're in green here, because they're two of the things that are recommended as new, new positions. We've had an ongoing need for some additional psychologist help at the high school, and that's mainly to conduct mandated evaluations that typically are recommended or requested by, by a parent, or sometimes recommended by a, a teacher. Now, the graph in terms of the special ed, teaching services is in blue, 61%, and that is mainly the service that we provide for our youngsters in-house, the 548 who are here every day. And then, you can see the tuitions, another big chunk, 26% of the special ed budget is, is tuitions, transportation, other kinds of service, services, counseling, psychological services, and so on. Facilities and operations, John put together this chart, and you can see the various categories in facilities and operations. There's electricity on the left, heat, utilities, maintenance, and custodial services. And we feel that this is an area that we've neglected, trying to keep teachers in classrooms and, and put the emphasis up close to where the children are, but we can't continue to neglect some of these services. So, we've paid more attention to this, and actually, in the budget, there is a request for three custodians, two for the middle school, largely because it's a bigger, a bigger building, one for the high school, where we've been under staff for a couple of years. So, there were a bunch of these, I pulled out a couple of them. We talked last week about, you know, how do you know how many custodians you need? You need some sort of... You need some sort of an external source, I guess I would call it, to make recommendations and this is the Association of Higher Ed Facilities officials and they've got some kind of catchy phrases here to describe the level of cleanliness that you may want or not. I was smiling a bit about this the other night after the meeting, thinking about, you know, we've been talking a lot about level services and so I'm not so sure we want moderate dinginess to be a level service. So we're going to work to be beyond that. But this gives a sense of how many custodians want and might need to have. And then we put together a chart showing how many custodians using that particular standard would be appropriate to have and it's based upon square footage. And so this chart just shows our high school and middle school but you can see here that we're looking for two additional custodians at the middle school and one at the high school. We currently have seven and a half at the high school. We would move to 8.5 and that puts us somewhere between the level two and level three cleaning categories. And similarly at the middle school, we need two additional, or proposing that we have two additional because of the size of that building. In fact, it's now three floors and the fact that there are some spaces there that don't exist in the current middle school. So lots more things to clean. The natural energy, energy budget, natural gas and that's for heating. And I'll look at the next one, oil is for heating. And one thing you should note there is that the current middle school is heated by oil, the new middle school will be heated by gas. So when you look at those costs, you have to think in terms of natural gas going up, and that's the bar furthest to the right, because of the middle school, but at the same time, if you look at the oil budget, oil coming down because, essentially because of the middle school. Electric budget in every new school or renovated school that we've attempted in the last several years, while there are lots of wonderful things and they are energy efficient as much as the new technology will allow, but they are more costly in electricity typically and that's because of codes for things like air exchange, which are for health and safety of the inhabitants. But those large fans that typically are on roofs are noisy as and costly as well. So if you break down all of the facilities things, you can see that maintenance is 25% of the budget because custodial service is 39 and then the other categories are smaller amounts. Now, we know that 4.92 is a larger number than we're likely to be able to get funded this year and we understand that and we are actively looking at ways that we can hopefully reduce this bottom line. We're reluctant to do it before we really have to do it and we know that's caused some concern, people wanting to know, what are you going to take out? But, you know, as I look at it, we've got two more weeks before the school committee even votes, let alone the advisory committee and the selectmen, and a lot can happen in those two weeks. Things aren't happening particularly fast this year, but a lot can happen. And I can tell you that as of Friday, we do have a leave, a person who's extending his leave, which was not what we predicted he would do and there's a savings of $35,000. So when changes come, if they come in the personnel area, then they can make big switches. And so we want to take advantage of as much time as we can give ourselves to know what those changes are before we then look at what needs to come up. Not before we look at it because we are actively, every day, saying, what if we did this? What if we did that? We're looking at the ways that we can reduce that bottom line because we realize that's just going to have to happen and reasonably so, given the size of our request. So personnel categories are the biggest place we look because you want to make big swings in the budget, they have to come in those areas. Special education, the budget is a very reasonable amount this year. So when I mention changes here, this would not be that we're looking to reduce the budget per se, but even one tuition, even one change in either direction can make a big difference. So these are things, reductions that we're looking to make, but possible changes in where we see students being next year. And we'll look again at the offsets and the revolving accounts, working on a new fee structure that we'll talk again about on Friday with the policy committee. And we'll look to see whether or not we can make any changes there that will reduce the bottom line. And you can be sure that we will make a close review of the details of every single function of the proposed budget. And before the meeting of the 24th, we'll come to an agreement, at least as to what our recommendation will be to this committee for its vote. So, not too bad in terms of time. So I don't know whether there are questions or comments, but we would certainly be willing to entertain those and whatever else you would like.
So we've obviously seen this a number of times now, probably two fewer times than we would in past years. Does anybody have any questions or comments that they want to make about what we've seen tonight, what we've talked about, anything they've been thinking about? Anybody in the audience? May I?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, could you please? We are taping.
Hi, Mary Power, One King Philip Path from the advisory committee. Thank you for another presentation tonight. I just, on that last slide, it mentioned the revolving funds and at our Saturday meeting, we had, we were given a really nice summary of kind of the status of the revolving funds. And taking a closer look at that after the meeting, one thing that struck me was that a lot of the personnel requests that are new for this year have to do with things like custodians for the middle school and the high school, a field maintenance person to help support, you know, the beautiful complex at the high school.
An extension to.
Yes, yes. And, but very closely related and, you know, as I looked at it, it struck me that even if not one penny was collected next year, there was enough to cover all of FY15, which says there are good reserves in place. But in a couple of those accounts, the balance was a little bit higher. Obviously that didn't take into account the earlier discussion about the fields project, but for example, I think in building, there was maybe $95,000 kind of residual after paying the bills for 15 and assuming nothing was coming in. So I would just make a request that as you look at those things again, to look at the opportunity of a win-win, which would be a way to fund some of those new initiatives but not rely on additional taxpayer dollars to do it. It might be a way to, you know, I know you guys are interested in bringing the number down. It might be a way to do that without reducing some of the services that you've identified as needs. So obviously, I don't think you can cover, you know, an entire personnel, but I think it would, you know, even to the extent that you can cover some of it, it might be helpful for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's exactly why we put that there as a place we need to look. One of the things we do have to be careful about is that for the coming year, because our fields won't be fully grown in, we have to be careful that we have enough to cover what we've already expended because that revenue will not be as great this year. But we still are going to look at all of them.
Yeah, and the building revolving account is one that we mentioned even before this meeting tonight that is a good opportunity to maybe take another look and see. Okay. Move on to the capital budget update. I know there was a second meeting with capital outlay last week.
Have you heard anything more since then, John?
I haven't heard anything more.
So I can bring you up to date. So we presented to a capital outlay, what we had discussed at our last meeting was that obviously the two feasibility studies would be removed from the budget, the, or removed from this year's budget, pushed out one year for feasibility studies and one year for the actual capital projects. And then we told them that there were, I think it was four additional items that we thought perhaps we could prioritize at a lower level and it brought, it brought the one, what took down to 1,015. And then if you take out the granite curving project, takes it down to 965, 879. And those four additional potential items were 77,500, which would take the number down to 888,379 if those are not funded. And I believe they're meeting tonight and I believe they're also meeting on the 19th, I want to say, when they plan to take some votes because I think their following week they present to advisory. They asked a lot of, we spent a lot of time, probably over an hour, talking about the technology program and what was the plan and what impacts that might have on the future and, you know, my crystal ball isn't all I could, but it was a lot of positive discussion about what we were doing and that it was being done in a responsible way, that we explained to them, you know, we spent a year and a half working on this and we weren't just responding to this idea that other schools are doing things, we're doing it, what we think is best for the kids. We also explained to them about the park situation and what was in the budget for that and also that even if for some reason the park was not, did not require the technology for online test-taking, that that was, that there wasn't anything there that would not be useful within the schools, the additional computers and the additional capacity in the, for the internet. So again, I think it was, John can certainly chime in if you'd like, I think it was well received, I think they appreciated us taking the time to go through it and, you know, we'll see what happens.
Right, yeah, they did say they would be deliberating, I think, next Wednesday and tonight, actually.
Tonight and next Wednesday, I think is the last meeting.
So once they, so they'll be voting next week?
It's not clear to me whether they're going to take their final vote next week. They said they were going to go back through all the budgets, but I think that's the last meeting they're going to have to really go through the budgets and hear whatever else they need to hear again. So whether, I'll double check with Ray to see if they will be voting next on the 19th or whether that, there will be a subsequent meeting before they go to advisory, where the, maybe after the 19th they will get back to us and say, here's what it looks like now and we'll go from that. I will, as you may notice.
They'll probably be going to selectmen first.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. I mean presenting a recommendation, I should say. Since I've been gone since, right after that till about 20 minutes ago, I haven't had a chance to talk to them since.
Thank you.
We will put these different PowerPoints. We have not put anything either into the Dropbox or on the website, so we will do that at this point as to where we are now and then obviously once the budget is voted, we change that.
Okay. Any other questions on capital before we move on? All right. 8.4, 8.5 are appointments, two new administrative assistants, welcome.
This is the second person that we've had food services. We've had first person only for two weeks and now we have a third person. We're going to check.
8.6 is some column advances for educational credits for a number of our faculty. 8.7 is an overnight field trip.
This is a year in advance, but given the scope of the fundraising fundraising that needs to occur and so on, we try to get those on the agenda sooner rather than later.
This is the global citizenship program.
Yes, it is.
Dot, is that trip open to anyone who would want to go on it or only members of the club?
I don't really answer to that. It's a good question of whether you have to be involved in the global citizenship club or not. Typically things like that are open to people who want, but I'll check on that. Good question. You know they're not.
Do you have subcommittee reports? Policies meeting on Friday.
Community outreach is also meeting Friday, right after. That will head around Valentine's Day.
If we need to, I'll get to the, in terms of long-term planning for the capital outlay, I'll let you guys know.
I'm actually around next part of Wednesday, Thursday of next week. Even on holiday.
I should mention that the special education funding working group is going to meet on Wednesday night at 6:00. That will be to discuss the proposal for the warrant article and it is a newly worded proposal with the help of our town council.
And we also, right, I think we had talked about suggestions for coming negotiations. We talked about that in executive session, so remember to get back to us before the 27th.
Well, actually, our meeting is on the 26th, so.
That's right.
I will be planning my homework for the break will be the budget reduction, that proposal and the annual report. So when you meet next on the 24th, I will have a draft of the annual report for the town report. And Carol, do you have the photographs that we considered? Because Betty Tower is hoping to have one, like within the next couple of days. We had several that we looked at and.
Do I have them? I mean, I forwarded them, but I'm sure I saw the email, the ones that Mary Ellen sent us.
Why does she need the photos now?
Because the, all of the things for the book need to be in by the 27th and apparently the photograph takes longer, particularly if it's a wraparound.
That's not how we did it last year, but okay.
Well, the photo, we had, the photo last year was the country club, but, so we don't have to have our reports in until the 27th, I think it is, but the photo that she needs goes a different room apparently.
That's fine, I can circulate them. I don't know which one we ended up sending.
I know. I said they would have candidates.
I have to get a photo for the middle school report too, because I just did that, I have to get a report, a photo for the building committee report too. Because I just did that report. But last year I just sent it with the report.
Well, I don't know. I checked some this morning.
All right, well, we're meeting Wednesday, so, okay.
Just to let everybody know here on the committee, the Hingham Sports Partnership has reached out to the SPED Special Education Parents Group to put together a program to offer athletic sports opportunities for the special education population and I've been attending as the school committee liaison. And I find it very exciting.
I think that was in direct response to some communication we got last year. That's good to hear.
And you're setting up as a nonprofit because there are apparently some grants that can be applied for with that kind of status, which is even more exciting. They did a Survey Monkey survey of parents to get some ideas as to the kinds of programs and of course the range of needs for those children is so wide. It'd be interesting if they can come up with some patterns, but they hope to get something on the drawing board for the spring, so.
That's great.
It's amazing how many people have come out to be part of that board, if you will, or working group. Totally amazed at how many folks.
You're absolutely right. That is what I found very, very rewarding.
Good thing, says a lot for our community.
Okay, no executive session this evening, so unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor. Thank you.